Hello folks, my name is Jim Wurthen. The show is Wurthen One on One. We're here on Channel 17 Cox Cable every Monday at... I've got to get this right. Every Monday at 2:00, Wednesday at 5:00, and Friday at 7:00. But the reason I have a hard time saying that is we are on so many other platforms. Mike Nicholson, if you pick him up on Facebook, is broadcasting live now. We're on TV SB website. You go to the On Demand site and you go all the way to the bottom. They hate me. Wurthen One on One is last. They claim it's the alphabet, but they just don't like me. And then you can go to YouTube, Wurthen One on One. So the reason I say that is you're going to know people who don't follow Cox Cable. You're going to know people, maybe not even in this area, that you want to spread the word to. You're going to have relatives that say, "Oh, I just saw something." You've got to watch this show or parts of it. So spread the word. And I always tell the joke about my granddaughter. She says, "Well, Becca," what's her name? She says, "You know it's on the internet. It'll be there for hundreds of years." And I said, "That's great, Becca." And she says, "No, because your great-great-great-granddaughter will be as embarrassed by you as I am." She didn't say that. She gets mad that I repeat that story, but I think it's funny. Today, and over the next few weeks, we're going to be focusing on the elections. The ballots will be out on October 10th. So it's not too early to begin to check your list and say, "I want to support that person." We're going to focus on education because what's happened was due to lockdowns of COVID and we'll get into other reasons that a large segment of the public school students have been left behind in a way that private schools weren't because they didn't lock down except for the semester they were in. And even Montecito Union and Cold Springs didn't lock down except for the semester they were in. So you're going to see the differences that occurred. But also today, my guest is going to give us her journey in education and why she is a candidate for this office. Effe Gina? Am I close?
Very close, Effe Gina Manalles.
You're Effy.
Effy, for sure.
Manalles. I met you just in the last month, and it's been a delight to get to know you.
Thank you.
Tell us, all my shows start out with where were you born? And a biography of the family. Because I believe that's what, and in your case, we'll clearly see that your experiences, your family and everything lead you to the appropriate person for this Board of Education seat. Where were you born?
I was born in Mexico City. We call it El Distrito Federal in 1956.
You don't have to tell. You lie about it. 1950, what a lie.
56. No, I don't lie about my age. I am a grandma and very proud and very happy. So it's okay, people know.
Good genes.
Thank you.
What brought you to this country?
Well, 37 years ago, my life took a turn. And I ended up here in the U.S. In Mexico City, I studied law. I come from a big family, 13, mom and dad. I saw my grandparents' 50th anniversary. So my family sticked together for a long time. But then I decided to come here, lost my parents, two illnesses. And so I decided, well, I need to try something else. When I came here, my husband picked me up at the airport. He told me, we came in a nice Caprice. It was like a rug. And picked me up in LAX, went through Malibu. And I thought, "Oh, my God, this is amazing." I fell in love with the place. But I didn't think I was going to stay. I still, I was back and forth. But it's been a journey.
Now, was it your husband who picked you up?
My husband, it was, back then it was my fiancee. And so he picked me up. We married a few months later. The first time I came here was in '84, and then I stayed in '85. We married in June in 1985, and we've been married ever since. I have two sons, both, like my husband, born and raised here in the U.S. And my older son has four kids, three daughters, one son. So I have four grandkids.
Are they in public schools?
They're in public schools. One is in, right now, the nine-year-old is in fourth grade. The six-years-old is in first grade. The five-year-old, my grandson, is in kindergarten. And the little one is at home, three-years-old.
And where are they?
Because my son is a corpsman in the Navy. They're stationed at a Navy base.
One of those strange naval bases is in the desert. And there are several of them.
Well, my son being in the armed forces, he has moved to different bases. He came from a very cold weather, which was in Connecticut, prior to come to the desert. So you can tell the difference between being in the desert and being in the snow. I went to there to see. Whenever they have gone, grandma is there. And I miss them. I miss them dearly. But now they're in California, well, I have them closer.
Now, sticking with that son, well, both of them, public schools in Santa Barbara?
Except for one year, but the rest in public schools, yes.
And afterwards, he went in the Navy?
My older son, yes. But he started, he showed inclination towards the armed forces. When he was in sixth grade, he went to Police Explorers. Then he was in junior high, and he was in Sycadets. Then he went to, let's see, Police Explorers, Sycadets. There was something prior. And then when he was in high school, he went to JROTC when JROTC was still.
Junior ROTC?
Junior ROTC.
We don't have that anymore.
We don't have it anymore.
They're finally building back ROTC at the university, but it went way downhill during the anti-war movement. People forgetting that we don't train the military to go to be at war. We train them to be prepared. Pardon me.
No worries.
The other son?
He went to also public schools. He's working for a company, and he's doing some kind of wiring. He's finally finding, found his passion. He loves that. And he's doing really well, too. He's coming, he came back with us, with the economy the way it is. He said, he told mom and dad, "Can I come here?" We don't see them very much because he's working, and then he goes with his friends. He comes, he studies.
How old is he?
He's 29, and my older son is 34. He is a corpsman in the Navy, very proud of both.
The, you married in Santa Barbara?
No. We, at the time, our income was very, very low. And so we went to Las Vegas. We married in Las Vegas.
By Elvis? One of the chapels?
Nope. We went to the county office. My mother-in-law, we drove with my mother-in-law. And it was different. But it was one of those things that every year we used to go to Vegas. It's been a while that we haven't. But it was fun. She was a lot of fun.
I've had properties in Las Vegas, clients in Las Vegas, sold properties in Las Vegas. And over the years, starting back in the '60s till today, it has changed almost every decade. It's different. Casinos seem to be the same. I don't gamble much when I'm there. $20, that's slot machines. So tell me about your husband. He was your fiancee, you marry. What was he doing?
At the time we were married, he was doing seasonal jobs for the, for service. He also belonged to this group that is called the Hotshots in Ojai. He was working with his, at the time, before we met, he was working with his dad. And his dad was a gardener, very hard-working person. He's very well-known in Santa Barbara. He volunteered for Casa de la Raza. He did a lot of good in the inter community, both my mother-in-law and my father-in-law. So my husband learned to hustle when he was little. He would be going with his dad along with his brother.
Couple of years as a hotshot, he was a fireman?
Well, he was, he was a hotshot. But due to his condition he has, well, physical, physically he was very fit, but his eyesight and then his feet, it was a little hard for his knees. So he couldn't continue on. He wanted to be, to stay, but he had a lot of fun. I just found a picture of him in behind one of the, in front of one of the trucks. And he looked very happy. Whenever he talks about it, he's just a happy camper.
Well, it sounds like he worked his way up physically through our economy. Did he go to work for the city of Santa Barbara?
My husband worked for 20-something years for the city of Santa Barbara. He worked for the street department. And he retired about two, three years ago.
Public works?
Public works, yes.
About how many years, 20 years?
More than 20 years, yes.
You told me a story about your husband and a truck that crashed at the Milpus off-ramp.
He was working for the city, for the street department. And there was a truck that was falling where the roundabout is. And nobody wanted to lift that up. It was very dangerous.
It laid down?
It was like, the whole cabin was, like, if you figure, this is the bridge on Milpus, by the roundabout, the 101. And so the cabin was hanging. My husband actually, with other people, they pulled it out. But the idea was, he's always been very brave. We're a family volunteer. My husband is, he's been volunteering for the Red Cross for a lot of years. He went to Katrina, he went to Hisusita Fire, he went to the 9/11, doing the statistic. But basically, he did, he had, he had done, because he's, he's very inclined, mechanic inclined, and he had his license to drive heavy equipment and semis. So he, we would move stuff around, doing some statistics as well.
So he figured it out before the city engineers could, huh?
Yes. At times it was told, "Well, you don't have a degree." But he was recognized sometimes. And, but he's a very, he's a very humble person. He's not the person that goes, "Oh, I did this, or I did that." Even when he retired, they wanted to throw a big party. And he appreciated the gathering that they had, but he went silently. He said, "I'm just a common Joe." And he's the guy that, he's an example for his kids. My son also, he, obviously, he's in with the government.
Casa de la Raza, Red Cross. I take some credit for the founding of Casa de la Raza.
That was my loss, my loss.
Strange. Tom Costello, who was, put it together, was in the same real estate company. And one day, he sat me down and said, "Can you help me figure out how we buy this?" And so we worked together so he could put together the group that formed Casa de la Raza. So I take some credit for it. Not much, a couple hours.
Oh, well. My, my loss were the ones that volunteered for Casa de la Raza. My, my mother-in-law and my father-in-law went amazing cooks, amazing. My mother-in-law actually got me.
I bet I've eaten their food.
I got a lot of weight. I was very skinny when I came here. I couldn't stop eating my mother-in-law's food. She was just, wow.
Well, so your husband's retired. What's he doing now?
He's working in his hobbies. He's mechanically inclined. He puts that, he's hardly together, all cars. He has a lot of projects, I have to say. So whenever he brings something, another project, guess what? I bring another tree to the house. So we have trees and...
Do you ever say to him, "Finish that project"?
Yes, yes, many times.
"Don't take a third and fourth."
Yes, many times.
Typical man.
He's a handyman. He's a handyman. He built up the picket fence and then the gate. He figured things himself.
Folks, we won't be giving you his contact information. He's got plenty of projects.
He has his pickup, he has his car, his motorcycles.
So you're here, and he's working. What did you do?
I just retired last year. I worked for Santa Barbara Unified School District over 28 years. I started in 1989, and within, 1989 to 2021. But within, in the interim, I took two years, two times two years, two years of leave of absence.
Boys having children.
Yeah. And the first time after I worked at, my first school was Franklin School, Franklin Elementary School. And so I got pregnant, and I said, "I have to take care of my kids."
Franklin's the key community on the east side.
Lower East Side, Mason of Milpus Street. We had about, at that time, in 1989, about 800 or something students. Most of the population was Spanish-speaking, same thing with the parents. And it's an amazing population. I've been living in the area for all this time, 37 years, except one time that I lived for about two months or so in Ventura. We came back to Santa Barbara. And that's where we purchased our home. We live on the Lower East Side. And I've been in Santa Barbara, working at different schools. But the first one was Franklin Elementary School.
Now, the Franklin Center, it is, it still have an elementary school? Or they've been dispersed to other elementary schools?
Well, right now, there's, the Franklin Elementary School is still on Mason, K through, K-26. And they have the Franklin, the Franklin Center. And they have also the Adelante Dual Immersion campus.
Tell us, you're at Franklin, tell us what you did there.
I was, I started as, the first year that I worked there, I was hired to be the office assistant. And a year after, the secretary went to, the secretary resigned, I believe. And I became the school secretary, elementary school secretary. From there, I stayed there for a few years, and that's when I got pregnant. My son was born in 1993, and 19...
When you came back from that, did you come back to Franklin or?
No. There was, I went to Washington School on the Mesa. I was there also the, over the years, they changed numbers, but it's the same thing, secretary. I was the office coordinator at Washington Elementary School. And then there, when I was there, I took also another two leave of absence.
Franklin had a large minority population.
Most of the students.
Washington, though, is white trash.
It's mostly Caucasian. And because we had, or they had, still have the magnet program, gifted, gifted and talented program. What I saw, the percentage of students being in that program was minimum. It's a good school, no doubt about it.
Well, I don't know how these things work out, but it has a view of the ocean, and Franklin has a view of Milpus Street.
Right. It's different, it's different.
And that isn't some racial plan by somebody. It's just the way things evolve. Were there Latino students at Washington?
Yes, yes. We had, we have students that began, whether either bilingual or just monolingual. But they were placed in classes just like any normal kid.
Now, back, if I, always correct me, my audience loves when people tell me I'm full of S-H-I-T. I know you wouldn't use that language. At Washington, and, at Franklin, then at Washington, we weren't into teaching mainly in Spanish and then trying to work them into English. Wasn't it more of an immersion into English and then letting their families and carrying on the Spanish language?
Everyone was learning English. There was not a real dual immersion. For what I know recently, there is, it has changed. However, the principal at the time, he really wanted a dual immersion, but he left. So he went to become an assistant superintendent. And it was kind of sad to see him because he really wanted the kids learning both languages at the same time. Kids are very good students. They like sponges. They learn, and it's incredible, especially at a young age. And so he left, and then we had a series of principals that every administrator that comes aboard, they have, they have their own way of doing things. So it was different. We had to adjust.
Do you find that, and I know it's probably changed in the last 10 or 15 years, but back in the day, as we say, do you find that male principals quickly want to move into administration where female principals want to stay teaching? Do you find that to be true?
I really cannot really answer that question. Because our principal at the time, that, he was amazing. Blast, his name is Blast Garza, he was a Mason principal. So he had been in the school for a lot of years.
Name again?
Blast, Blast Garza, Mr. Blast Garza. He's bilingual. He got along very well with the staff, with the kids.
To Washington?
No, that was a Franklin school. I'm talking about Franklin school. So then he moved, like I said, to become an assistant superintendent. And he did a good job, too. In general, he's amazing in the community. He knows the community. He knows the population that I, that I want to represent because he walk in the area, too. He knows, he knows the parents by name, or he knew the parents by name. He retired years ago. With the kids, with the students, he will, he will go to the door and he will shake their hands. So he was, he was a truly leader, and everyone knew him. So, but my personal experience with him, it was just amazing person and amazing principal.
Later on, we'll get to what COVID lockdown did. You know, where not only were students not in the school, but their principal and their teachers couldn't shake their hands and talk to them. And even after we reopened. City College is still not opened, and we'll have candidates for the City College Board who think it's insane that you have to prove vaccination and have to wear masks. And City College attendance is cut in half. There's still some doing distant learning, but it's just horrible what we've done to the education system. But you frequently point out, it's, a lot of the problems precede that by years.
They were before COVID, way before COVID. I have seen over the years a decline in kids reading, writing, math, even science. And it has to do with the leadership, and it has to do with the curriculum as well. You have to give teachers more freedom. There are amazing teachers out there, amazing. After Washington School, I went to, I went to work as, I demoted myself twice. So I went to, I worked as an instruction assistant at the Santa Barbara High School.
Oh, what was this?
Santa Barbara, it was called, not ministry, I'm sorry, teacher's assistant. They call them ped educators now. I was, I worked, once I came back from my second leave of absence, I went to the high school. And then I noticed that kids at that high school level, they have a very low reading level, five, sixth grade. Some, they were really behind in math.
So 11th and 12th graders were halfway, they were fifth and sixth grade in reading?
Yes. And in math, very, very, very low. Forget about the timetables. At the time, I even, because my son would walk from the academy, Academy to West Downtown, he would come. And there was one, in one particular class, that he would be walking up, I needed some help, too. Teachers, they, there's only one teacher and more than 30 students. And kids are placed from, kids with disabilities or kids, from kids with disabilities with gifted as well, which, it is okay when you, when you put them together because one takes after the other one, or that's the idea. And so I would be walking with the kids. We would be reviewing the concepts. But it was, it is not easy when you have either the language barrier or when your skills are so low that you have to start from the beginning, from very basic.
How long have you set them over high?
Less than a school year. Because the academy secretary was, was going to be on a leave of absence, she was pregnant.
Describe the academy.
The academy was downtown, it's Santa Barbara Community Academy. And it was initiated by, it was a parents initiative. So they, they have the campus, K through 6 downtown. After a few years, I believe they started at the junior high. Their campus was at the junior high. Eventually, they moved it to what it is right now, which is on Garden. And so they went from K through 6. And over the, and a few years later, they divided the campus with the thought of moving the whole campus to La Cumbre Junior High Campus. So a school within the school. So I move along with the upper grades, 4 through 6 to...
Now, in the back of my mind, I recall the academy wanting to become a, what do you call them?
Charter?
A charter school, yes.
It wasn't the thoughts within the parents. It was, they were very strong leaders, the parents. The communication among them, the partnership was real. And they had, the kids that have uniforms, they were very proud of it. So, but then with the, with the school move, it was, it was divided between K through 3 downtown, 4 through 6, La Cumbre. So I moved, I moved with the 4 through 6. There was no transportation offered. So we, parents, that we had our kids, I went along with my kid, too.
There's, as you pointed out, some wonderful teachers. But one of the problems has been the unionization, where they get a contract. And the money goes frequently in their budgets to teacher salaries that have been negotiated up instead of maintenance, instead of extra helping non-credentials. You never got a teaching credential, did you?
No, no. I wanted to pursue my credential. Because the union, I unionized, I still belong to the Victory Club. With the idea also, they offer, they used to offer the scholarship for the employee. for the employee, a classified employee and their family members, direct family members. So I thought, I, I didn't have time when, when I was working. I, I had my family, I have other commitments. I, I, I was doing other jobs, I was translating for, for a private company.
So you were never a member of the teachers' union?
No, 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 but the, the classified, the classified. And the classified at one point did offer. It was not until this year when, when we received an email that said, it's at hold. So no longer that, that is offered.
Well, I agree with you. I've known many and we even have in our political spectrum, great teachers. But the idea that a lot of money went to them because their, their union kept negotiating a better contract. People don't realize, I'm not sure what it is here, but in California, a teacher with 10 years' experience is making over $80,000 a year and has a summer off. You know, that's for, I think it's 172 days they're being paid for, but they get this gigantic contract. And my opinion is that that diverts money from non-classified helpers, staff and from maintenance. And you left Santa Barbara High before it became really deteriorating physically. They passed a bond issue a couple of years ago to try and bring it up to speed. A lot of it went to bad contracts for a football field while a boiler broke down at Santa Barbara High while they were building the football field and they couldn't get the boiler fixed because they couldn't move the money around quick enough. So you, you leave Santa Barbara High and go where?
From Santa Barbara High, when, when I was called upon to, to be the school secretary for the academy. The form of the academy is when I jumped in with the, we were, by then, the other, the other, the lower grades, K through three were going to come to La Cumbre, but I didn't, I didn't, I didn't stay with them. I, I moved to La Cumbre Junior High and worked on the directions, the direction of Mrs. Gaines, Joan Gaines. So I didn't see the, the second process of, I didn't participate rather actively with, with, with the process of moving the, the, the lower level students into, integrating with the whole campus. So I, I moved to La Cumbre. Going back to you, to the comment that you made about classified employees, I consider them unsung heroes. And I, my admiration began when I was at Washington School. They used to gather all together in one, in one room to have lunch. There was, there was another, another area, small areas also for teachers. But most of the, it was too small for everyone. Sometimes we, we will go, as a secretary, we'll go with them, but it, it was, it was in a different capacity. So I see the assistants and then that, that classroom was taken off from them. So they didn't have another place. So they end up eating outside or going.
So the classified, non-credentialed weren't, were kind of isolated from the certificated?
No, 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 it was more like you, you, you group within, within a group. It's not that they were separated, but it was more something that, that it was, it was really nice. It was, I will join them, so it was really nice. So when that room was taken, was, was not, was no longer available for classified, I thought, no, this is not right and the, the lunchroom should be bigger so to accommodate everyone. But there's no, there was no room.
Yeah, we are, we are a tribal society. We've found that people self-segregate.
That we do.
And that's happened in the races. You know, there are some buildings at the colleges now that are all black, all Asian and, you know, and it's not because the schools made them do that, it's because we do self-segregate.
We do.
People that we're comfortable with.
We're identified, but we also.
Okay, you're over at La Calina, which I have to.
La Cumbre.
I mean, at La Cumbre.
Sorry.
And I have to remind people, I just, that La Cumbre is nowhere near La Cumbra Peak. And it looks out at Modoc and the Mesa. And La Calina is on foothill looking at La Cumbra Peak.
That's why the La Cumbra got the name, La Cumbra Peak, which is, a lot of people, they don't know that that is the north. So Santa Barbara is located in a, in a very, very weird way.
Yeah, even our most articulate community members don't realize that when you come down State Street, when you look at the ocean, it's to the south. And one of the few places in the United States, yeah, in the world where the population, a couple of hundred thousand people are looking south, not west or east.
Right, right.
Now, so you're over there, how many hours were you getting paid for?
I was, I was working for six hours. But for, for paying benefits and receiving benefits, which is health benefits, I should say, for health benefits, we were considered full-time. So that's one thing that, that people need to know. Before you retire, make sure that you other, if you're, for retirement, you need to be eight hours, not six, six doesn't count. So when I put down that I worked over 25 years or over 20 years, it was because I worked longer. But for, for full-time, it is only when you're working eight hours, not six hours. But for, for pay your, for your health insurance, you're considered full-time.
Now, you told me some stories about the projects you took on. It was like you were getting paid for 20 or 30 hours at the school, but you were working 60 or 70 hours because you were volunteering to do a lot of things for the kids and the families. Tell us your day.
Particularly at the academy, I was hired to work six hours only.
A day.
A day. And then eventually, one, one hour was added because I was doing yard duty. There were only two classified people, which was me, the, the office assistant and one assistant for, for the, for this, for the school, for the upper grades. So it was very difficult to have someone outside, especially being new in, in, in the community. And, and we, and the parents, they have to transport the kids and we didn't have, we didn't have the school bus. So I, I had to do the yard duty, I had to do the lunch duty, Sylvia and I would do the snacks. Whenever, when the kids were coming to, to the school, we had to be in the parking lot. I didn't mind, I didn't mind that, but that took me a little bit of, when my work hours, I couldn't really, I had to get up. I was sitting down to do my, my office work and then I had to get up to do yard duty or a snack.
Such great experiences and to get to some of the issues, I need to move on. Where did you go after La Cumbre?
I stayed at La Cumbre for over 12 years as an instruction assistant.
Did you retire there?
I retired from La Cumbre, from La Cumbre, yes.
Let's go back to some of those stories I've heard about La Cumbre. You were only getting paid six hours.
Six hours.
But you were there 10.
Well, I was working.
You were a volunteer.
In the, in, in the morning, I was, I was working six hours. And then in the afternoon, I, actually I had to correct that myself. Because in the afternoon, there was an after-school program that the principal brought. She was an outgoing person that would be, would be bringing all these community members to pitch in, literally to pitch in to, in order to make possible an after-school program for adults and kids. So we had the PIC program, which is a, a program for students that graduate from our school, from La Cumbre, going to San Marcos, coming to La Cumbre from five to, five to seven to do their work, to get, receive help. Most of those students were in, they were taking AP classes. They were put in, they, they were challenged because, and most of them, they were, they were either bilingual or Spanish speaking. So by, by then, they were, they were receiving help directly from the PIC program. And then we have the after-school program, it was called a one-point West Side Evening Program. It was program for adults, same thing from, from five to seven. I was assisting the coordinator of that program and we have a director from downtown. But the monies came from, from private, from private sector. So we had the campus, but the money, the, the program was paid for, for donations, literally. So we had English classes for adults. We had woodwork shop. We had cooking class, which was healthy class for even diabetes.
She really made it a community center.
It was a community center because even the clinic.
I remember going to a large meeting there for the, people from Montecito came and because of the, the terrible flood in Montecito after the Thomas Fire. And I remember a meeting there with health people and everything. And the whole community was invited to use their auditorium. So was that mainly the principal who was causing those kinds of things?
The principal, she was the one.
How long was she there?
I'm not exactly sure because when I came, when I came aboard, she, she had come from, from Adams School. And then for what I, for why I understand, she started at La Cumbre her career as a teacher. And then went to Adams, I don't know, other schools and then came, she finished her career. Sadly, she passed away about three years ago. And, but she, her last school was, was La Cumbre, she didn't want to retire. She was committed to the community, was committed to the students, to the teacher, to, to, to her staff. And, but she was also a person that if, that she would be straight up to you. You did something right, she would recognize, if you did something wrong, she will come to you and then she will talk. So it was a very good leader, in my opinion.
The school board, that you're running for one of the seats on it, went along with the lockdown for two years, basically. Yet Montecito Union, Cold Springs, Providence High, Bishop Diego, all.
Private schools.
They all opened.
Or, or public school, but.
Yeah, they all opened quickly. Masks, we won't get into the crazy thing that they're doing with vaccines and praise the Lord, most parents aren't going to have their five-year-old given this drug. But tell me your reaction to masks and what that does to communication?
When we were the, what is called the hybrid program? Well, I think, first of all, COVID opened really what it was going on with, with students falling behind. But kids were already behind before COVID. COVID aggravated it. After COVID was even worse because we weren't during COVID, even during COVID, we were not able to see the kids' faces. They were, they weren't, they weren't at home and we could see only the boxes. Then when, when they came back to class, they were, they were wearing the mask. Some of the kids, they were, they literally, they couldn't breathe. We had to remind them that they need to put it on because that, that was what we were instructed. But they had like a little break, there were teachers that said, most teachers, I will have to say, they said, you, you have, if you need a break, let's go, go to the window. If you, you go, you need a break, just go to the bathroom. Even if you had to go two or three times, it is okay. But we couldn't see their faces. And some of them, they were, they were, because they were afraid to be in, in, in school, they were wearing their, their hoodies or, or even their, the baseball cap, their hoodies and their mask.
Barely see their eyes.
We didn't, and, and they were, they were so, some of them, they were so shy. They were truly afraid. So it was very difficult to get across. And so you have to literally sit down next to them in order to see if they were, they were getting what they were, they were taught. It was very difficult for kids. It really, in my opinion, and people might not agree with me, but we, they were robbed for two years. And it aggravated their, their, their academics also physically and mentally. I, I took an internship when Mrs. Gaines was at La Cumbre at the county mental health. And, and I could notice many of the, the patterns that I saw at the clinic, at the chiropractic clinic with people that, that had different mental illnesses. That our kids, they were acting in such a way that was alarming because they were suffering and they were suffering in silence. And I, I, I don't think, I don't, I, I didn't know that the school had public schools. Our district had the choice of opening the schools like other schools or, or closing the schools. It was a process, then eventually I learned it was a process, they had to fill out paperwork. It, it took work, a lot of work for those, for those schools that applied and got it and, and have their, their campuses open or reopen. But our schools decided, no. So who's in charge of, of making those decisions? It, it really damaged our kids, it damaged our future. Our kids are a future. And if you don't, we don't support them, we don't, we don't realize what, how much damage it was done, then it, it, it truly is falls into the hands of, of the ones that make the decision.
Well, we'll just blow by critical race theory because the school board gave a big budget for 10 years to a group that was teaching critical race theory, which is reverse racism, teaching different groups to hate and feel either oppressed or victim or very confusing to the children and, and even their parents. But you pointed out that the other basic problem with education in our area well preceded that. Talk about math and reading and, and those criteria. What, what were our schools doing eight, 10 years ago?
The system is broken. And it was broken, like I said, before COVID. Kids were very behind in reading, math, writing. What we need, what I think it worked before, we need to bring back. There's, what's, if something is not working, let's get rid of it. Core isn't, core, the curriculum is, is, the common core is not working. Phonics, we need to go back to phonics. We need to go back to math. A lot of kids, I need to add to, to the, to the math concepts. A lot of kids coming from other countries, I'm talking to my experience, from people, the kids that I work with, coming from Mexico, for example, their math level is higher. Not all, there are exceptions to, but the math level is higher. What it stops them is the fact that they, the, the language barrier. And if people don't understand that they have a high, a higher degree of math, they need to be put in class that they're challenging for them. If you put them in all the remedial classes or classrooms rather than putting it in, in, in the level of math where they are in, then we're holding them behind too. We're having them like, okay, you, you need to wait until you prove or you learn the language. Well, let's, let's put, let's remediate that. Let's avoid that. Because this kid that, that have these skills, higher skills, but they lack of the language, well, let's, let's, let's help them. And then it, it will build their, their self-esteem. But if you put them in, in, in classes really low because they don't speak the language, whatever the language is. I have worked with kids that speak Spanish, that speak Persian, that speak French. And they, they're in the same boat until they learn the language, then they're put in more advanced classes.
Yeah, and the statewide teachers' union, the same thing is true in Orange County with the Vietnamese and San Francisco Bay Area with the Chinese students, they're held back.
Yes.
I have had the theory that children shouldn't be allowed to have a calculator till they're in their junior year of high school.
Yes.
Because calculators dumb us down on doing math, being able to write our multiplication tables, add and subtract. Am I right? Tell me I'm right.
I'm talking from my own experience and with kids that I work with coming from other countries and some coming here, including my sons. A lot of, a lot of the concepts, a lot of the math that you're doing, you're doing in your head. If you only show the result, which you have to show the process and we have to keep reminding the kids, I need to know the process. But if they show you the results and they tell you orally, this is how I got there, you know that it's right and then they copy. Let's not assume, but just because we had the result, oh, here is your copy. No, yes, and in my opinion, don't give them a calculator. Yes, and in my opinion, don't give them a calculator. Unfortunately, right now, they have the iPads. And, and what is sad even more is that that is their world. That is a tunnel vision. And they just ask, Alessa, what is two times three? Two times three is six. What are you, I mean, what, what is the, the brain working? It is easier to ask a, a system or a computer or your phone than actually doing manually. That's another thing that needs to come back, writing. We, I've worked with an amazing teacher, many amazing, but one amazing teacher at La Cumbra, science teacher, who has what is called the interactive notebook, science. The kids go every day and they write, they cut, they paste, they, they draw. They do amazing job. At the end of the year, they have their notebook. They have the choice to leave the notebook at school or take in with them. That is going to serve them for life. So if we have more of that, then the, the schools, the, the, the education that we're providing to the kids, it would be great.
I cut you off earlier because I was so interested in where we were going. What level are San, Santa Barbara Unified School District's students at in math and reading?
At a junior high level, when I was a facilitator for this program called PICA, Parent Institute for Quality Education, it was in the after, after-school program, we were, we were trained to facilitate the, the, the information to the parents. And one of the things that we learned is that our kids at a junior high and even at a high school level in reading and math, they're fourth grade. So if you are 13, 14 years old, 16, 15, 16 years old, and, and the math, particularly within the Spanish community, Spanish-speaking community, is at fourth grade level, fourth, fifth grade level, it, it's a crime. So why, but there is, I believe there is one reason behind. The minute that you enroll or the parents enroll the kids, if you fill that form that said English Home Language Survey, and then you write down other languages, English, say Spanish, other language besides English, then that is the way, you put it in remedial classes. A lot of kids, they stay behind. Why? Because instead of giving them higher math, higher reading, higher writing, composition, literacy, they're held behind, literally. It's, it's a way of dragging them. Why are we doing that? That's why I'm here. I want to tell the parents, do something. Let's do something. Let's work together. Let's give, this, this, this is nonsense.
And issues in this race, and we're down to our last five minutes, are safety. The uniformed officer has been ordered off of San Marcos campus. I think that the resource officers, they're called, are still on Dos Pueblos in Santa Barbara. But the San Marcos has taken him off. There's violence in our schools. There's sexual harassment between some teachers and students that come to light. And in one case, crying parents at a school board meeting caused the school board to finally report the sexual advances of a AP teacher to young boys. And it was, the law is, once it's reported, 24 hours to the police. And it had been six weeks since the parents reported it. I think adherence to the actions that we're supposed to do with the greater community, not bearing the abuses within our schools of bad teachers and bad administrators. Do you feel the same way?
In a couple of, a couple of schools at a junior high, high school level, I saw some, some violence. It was, we had, we used to have what is called the security, which is employed by the district. Some of them, they did a good job. But others, either they didn't see, or they didn't want to see that. Which was sad, but it is a very, very delicate issue. Parents entrust that, that our district with the safety of, of our children. So it is a must to have some type of authority that will safeguard that safety. So the kids, when they go to school, it is, it should be a safe place to be. I'm, I know that I'm, I'm not going to be politically correct, politically correct. But I think if we bring back the officers from, from, the officers back into our campus, some of them, I was telling you, one, there was one particular officer that got across like, like friend with the kids. So whenever they see, they, they will see him, even parents, because he taught a class in the after-school program. And he will guide them toward the, the, the system. And I said, look, this is what we can do. If you have a problem, you call me, I'm, I'm there. He will give them their, their cellphone, private cellphone. So when you become friends, you become, or even acquaintances with one particular, within the law enforcement, kids feel safe, parents feel safe. But we need to bring more people, more classified people to help out as well and train them, because they're not being trained, we're not being trained.
We're running out of time. I just want to throw in that you also, in all these movements, worked with dyslexic and other challenged students. So you've had some experience in that. And the election is November 8th, but the ballots hit October 10th. Tell the people what they can do to help you.
I would be honored to get your vote. If you vote for me, I will represent you. I'm not a career politician. I am a mother, I'm a wife, I'm a grandma. I always had advocated for kids, their education. We need to get a good education for our kids. I always encourage parents to participate. PTA, ALACS, DHLACS, SS Student Society Council, be participant. Be participant of your student day. If you see something wrong, say something. Put it in writing perfectly, so an answer will be, get back to you. The language doesn't matter, you just put it in writing concise, to the point, and you will be heard. If you vote for me, I will be, I will be in your hands because I'm a public, I have been a public servant. I'm serving, I'm still serving my community.
So you're going to be focused on the parents and the community?
Our kids, our parents, our teachers. We can work together, and the administration should support us.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.